A roll call shows a full board in attendance. Our meeting was properly posted. We'll move into the first agenda item. Which is a recommendation to approve the minutes of the January 11th, 2023 Regular Board of Education meeting. Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Would there be any further discussion? All in favor of approval? Say aye and aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the resolution to approve the January bill list. Make a motion to approve the January bill list.
Okay.
Any discussion around the bill list? So we have a motion to approve the January bill list. All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First up is the superintendent's report. Honors Jazz Convo.
And all the superintendent reports that are the favorites. The superintendent doesn't speak much, and we have students do that for us. And today we have our jazz, our honors jazz convo here to play a couple of tunes to celebrate music at Arrowhead. Just going to be a ton of jazz. A new world. That's meant to be a march, and then the others.
Woo! Woo!
So this is the majority of our jazz ensemble, our tenth class, uh, feel a class. And we'll miss it, our piano player, but we could, you know, three guys. Do you have any questions about what these kids are doing? We're playing some New Orleans music. It is Mardi Gras season anyway, so.
I would like to say, uh, thank you so much for coming in. It's delightful to be here with you all. Uh, I'm particularly impressed with the, uh, soloists who played, uh, a couple of sax, pianist, interpreter, and trombone player. I, uh, won't tell you exactly how long ago it was, but I was a high school trombone player. And I know how difficult that little piece was that you just did. Yeah, very well.
Of course, all jazz players are cool, but also the reform tromboneists.
Jeez. Trombone player, guy from area. I've also dropped off.
Wasn't cool enough to make it for a jazz.
I think what I love about, and I'm very intimately, uh, I know a lot of these kids, uh, friends of the family, uh, boyfriends of the family. Uh, and I love the way that you and, uh, the other instructors of music, uh, really allows these kids to just like shine on their own. Gives them an opportunity to, uh, to have solos, to stand up and, uh, you know, let it, let it all hang out. I, I think it's amazing. I guess they're great job. My name is Ryan Mizel. It's my question.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Mizel and these 15 students for coming in on a busy night to perform and help us celebrate the arts at Arrowhead. Because music and art, visual arts are important here. Thank you.
That is clearly a tough act to follow there. Okay, uh, we will move into, uh, comments from the public. Uh, before we invite the first speaker up, I will read the, uh, the, uh, the rules of engagement. Uh, any wishing, anyone wishing to speak to the board must be present and registered in the sign up form. A three-minute time limit is enforced. Public comment is only accepted during this agenda item. Sharing of minutes with another person stressing the board is not permitted. Speakers should address the board as a whole, not individual board members, and should remain polite and respectful. Only the board president may respond to the comments or questions. The board president has the authority to ask another board member or administrator to respond. Board members will not respond to public comments unless does it require the board president. The board president has the authority to cease any conversation at any time for any reason. Public comments will be taken under advisement. If public comments are in regard to an agenda item. When the board discusses that particular item during the meeting, the board may or may not address the comments, questions raised from the public. Only two more. Only the board will discuss and or take action. There will be no citizen communication during, uh, the time of agenda topics. Speakers are not immune from legal consequences related to the content of their speech. With that, I call it break and draw.
Thank you. Yes. Normally I would like to talk and not read, but I want to make sure I get this all across here, so. Uh, there is, for those of you knowing that this is not easy to do this. As you all know, I was the principal here at Arrowhead for 29 years. Due to my tenure with this organization, serving this organization and living in this community, I probably have as good an understanding about this organization as anybody. As you do your search for superintendent, I would like to publicly share attributes I believe are essential if you want to find someone that can lead this district effectively. As I reported to you this past summer, through my travels across the country, I personally witnessed one common theme in successful schools I visited last school year. That common bond was effective support. Teachers supporting students, building level administrators supporting teachers and students, district office personnel supporting principals, teachers, and students, and school boards supporting district office personnel as well as principals, teachers, and students. I would like to focus on the staff right now. The staff that has been assembled at Arrowhead is second to none. Collectively, they are dedicated, caring, and selfless. Most of them would be very difficult to replace due to their specialized training and understanding of our community's collective needs. The teachers need to feel supported and valued. In this day and age with a scarcity of quality teachers available, the staff could all leave and find employment in districts that are supportive of educators or private sector careers. If we want to lose, if you, if you start to lose teachers, the quality of our programs, both curricular and co-curricular, will suffer, as will our students. With this in mind, I would encourage you to look at the candidate's current district to see what their retention rate of teachers and administrators has been during their tenure in their position. It would be a direct reflection of the candidate and their willingness to support and value other educators if staff are leaving at a relatively high rate. I personally would not accept any excuse for low retention rates. This information can be ascertained by a simple open records request from the candidate's current district. I would also suggest that you look at academic performance as determined by state testing and report cards. I would not compare candidate to candidate, but rather the candidate's current district scores compared to what they were before they started at that district. A superintendent may not have the same level of direct impact on school performance as teachers have. However, this data will give you insight into their influence on school performance. As you know, Arrowhead prides itself on both act strong academic and co-curricular programs. I would like to now share some other related concerns. You will likely lose quality staff members if you don't learn what the role of the school board is designed to do. Like all other boards, a school board has three major roles. One, to develop policy and approve procedures that support those policies. Two, monitor the budget and make appropriate financial decisions. And three, evaluate the superintendent slash CEO based, based on agreed upon goals. Furthermore, it is your responsibility to hold each other accountable to stay in your lane and do the appropriate work of the board. I also want to remind you that you are one of nine people on the board, and therefore you have a one ninth say in all decisions. No one is more important or valuable than the other eight members of this board. As a member of a national board, I was required to do a six-hour online board training. This training is designed for nonprofit, for profit, and elected boards. It was made clear that the board's responsibility does not include running the district, organization, or business that it presides over. You currently have a high-quality superintendent who's leaving, from what I have read, because of the political nature of many of the decisions of this board. Please understand that the same thing will happen with future superintendents if you continue in this fashion. Last year, there were 107 superintendent positions available in Wisconsin. It's estimated that there will be between 80 and 100 positions this year. Superintendents are in a more scarce than teachers. Your behavior will determine longevity of Laura Myra's replacement. If you get this wrong, you will surely lose quality staff members who will not be able to be replaced. If this happens, the students will suffer, families will suffer, the taxpayers will suffer. The students and families will suffer because the quality of instruction and available programs will be diminished. All taxpayers could see their property values go down. It's estimated that the price of home in the Arrowhead district is inflated by 10 to 20% to some of our neighboring districts just because it's Arrowhead. If our academic and co-curricular programs suffer, surely there will be a reduction in our home values. More importantly, Arrowhead, which has become synonymous with high quality and accomplishments, risks losing its reputation and edge over other districts. I implore you to do your due diligence, to not allow your personal beliefs or relationships with candidates to cloud your judgment, to hire someone that will help Arrowhead grow and thrive in the tradition that has benefited our students and community for more than 60 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, next up is Darcy.
Hello, everybody. Darcy Subcheck. Would want to, um, say, uh, from the principals' comments were, I think, very accurate. Um, things that I wanted to say, which, um, quite a few things, but I didn't get to during the meeting conversation. One is, have you discussed, as had been discussed in the board, anywhere about having a inclusion consultant come in? I had requested that at a previous meeting. And I think it was Brandon, I'm not picking, Brandon asked why I wanted it. And I said, we, I did not think that our trans students are seen or heard, to which I got a rebuttal that we have, you have often said, thank you, and thank them for their bravery. However, one of the other former students who came out to speak had talked about all the bullying that happens with the trans kids engaged in our schools. And you all were saying, you have to report it, you have to report it, you have to report it. I would love to know if we can switch that onus from being, um, the student that's getting bullied to changing the whole culture and, um, atmosphere here. Because at some point, kids need to realize that what they're doing to these other children is wrong. And I think that that starts with you guys making that decision. Um, and possibly even repealing policy 651. So I think that needs to be said. Uh, your current policy 1421.4, I think it is, about restricting comments, I think is not okay as well because. For instance, today I didn't get a chance to speak, uh, train the conversation, no problem. I took, I did that once too. Um, and, uh, but it's really important for you guys to hear from your constituents. Because I think when I first started coming to these meetings, it was very often told to me that these policies weren't protested by parents. And so it's really important to get their feedback. Um, I've been told we can email to have conversations. I email the board probably once a month, and very rarely get responses. So I don't know how that's supposed to work. If you, if we want something going on the board as an agenda item, first we need to get you to respond to us. And that's, that's difficult to do. I get responses every once in a while and only from a couple of people. Um, so I think that if we were to take that away, then parents are going to feel even more left out of the process. And you keep saying how you want parent involvement and parent rights, and you really need to go both ways on that, though. You can't just have it one way and not the other. Um, last thing, if you are going to limit, um, public comment areas, I think that you should also prioritize the stakeholders that really matter. The parents of the students need to be priority, the staff, but nobody who lives outside of it. Like even people who are just community members who maybe just have paid their taxes. You know, they don't have a student here specifically. I think you should at least prioritize, especially if you're looking for efficiency and wanting to cut down on meeting times. I think that that would be good. Um, and. Um, sorry. Another technical one, sorry. Um. I think that might be it, but, oh, superintendent search, um, was disappointed. I know that there was a community meeting and Adam did respond to me, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Um, but yeah, I do think that parents do want to be involved more, um, and that, you know, we are in a critical time, you know? I, I have kids that are leaving North Shore, but coming here, and I'm just worried about North Shore's future as I am this school's future. Because as Brett said, you know, Laura cited some pretty specific reasons for leaving. And I concur that there's a lot of things happening on the school board that I don't think is the place of the school board. So I really do want you guys to get back to focusing on, you know, needing a pool or a tennis court, or they left tennis courts, or, um, you know, those kinds of decisions. Not regulating how children can act at school.
Thank you, Darcy. Uh, Brian?
Uh, thank you. So, um, at the community, uh, at the community forum, um, I spoke and we established that there was a timeline of six, six days between, um, when policy, oh, sorry. Name is Brian, for the record, name is Brian Chetola, um, member, or, um, from the Burton Community School District. Uh, speaking in regards to the change to policy, um, six four nine, um, in terms of the, uh, cooperative technology book, or the Chromebook policy. Uh, so in the community forum, uh, we went through the timeline, established the timeline of six days from the time of public posting to the time of passing. In 36 hours between the time of first public dialogue and, um, time of, time of passing. My wife and I wrote an email to the board, um, stating our, um, stating some, some feedback and opinions on it, um, on January the 11th, um, at 5:17 PM, um, to the entire board. Uh, we did get a, uh, thank you reply, uh, from Ms. Hammer, uh, to that. Um, I'm not sure, since I own, since I didn't get through everything I wanted to in the community forum, I was only given 20 minutes. Uh, and you limit that, I'm not sure how we're going to, how the board is going to welcome public debate, uh, on policy. So I'm kind of confused with that. Anyways, um, so in regards, given that this is my only chance, I guess, to talk about the policy that was already passed. And there was no opportunity for debate, uh, before it passed. Um, and we've already established that the passing of that is going to increase our compuls, our mandatory compulsory fees by $75. Above the $55 that's going to be applied to every student at the school. Um, which is a 136% increase in fees year over year to incoming freshmen, that there was no debate, um, and no public discourse over. Um, in regards to that, so the $75 fee is a fee for the Chromebook, uh, for the Chromebook hardware. Um, I know I'm supposed to not ask questions, but I'll try. Um, does, does the school board follow, um, guidance of the Department of Public Instruction for the state of Wisconsin? I assume that, I assume that they do. Um. I'm not sure, um, what other school districts, Chromebook policies that you're following. Um, I did some checking to some other, um, school districts that are related, um, both, or Oconomawak, Whitefish Bay, Kennel Rain, all have Chromebook policies. None charge households fees for the hardware. I believe this is because, um, there is, on the Department of Public Instruction's website, they refer to case, um, 1974 Sinclair versus the Board of Education. Um, went to the Supreme Court of Wisconsin. In there, they use the Supreme, the Sinclair case, um, as guidance to categorize user fees for the school. Category one, user fees. Uh, I do have a QR code and a link to this on the DPI website for anybody who's interested. Category one, fees are not permissible for any student in the school district for the following. Teaching apparatus such as hardware and operating system, microfilm readers, projectors, industrial arts equipment, presses, saws, et cetera. Home economic equipment, stove sewing machines, and art equipment, kilns, dark, dark rooms, et cetera. The DPI's website, based on this Sinclair case, that was ruled on to set guidelines and limits to a district's ability to assess fees for compulsory services. Specifically calls out charging of fees for computer hardware, which is why I believe that Kennel Rain, Oconomawak, and Whitefish Bay, three local examples, do not have fees for those Chromebooks. They have Chromebook policies, but they do not charge families for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, our last speaker is Suzanne Martin.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Martin. I'm a former employee in a district resident, and I have two kids that graduated from here. And, um, I want to dovetail off of what Brian was talking about, sort of. I think what, what I'm asking for is if you could put on your policy, your agenda for policies. Come up with a policy, a defined policy about how you revise or present policies. In other districts, what they do is they have their revision, and then you have your first reading. And it's the policy. It's not like, hey, we cobbled this together on Tuesday, we're going to vote on it Wednesday. No, it's on the agenda, this is the policy, and then they have the first reading, people can ask about it, talk about it, whatever. The next month, the second reading, they have three readings. So there's opportunity for someone to come in and be like, hey, I have a question about this. Instead of, wow, five days ago, I found out that my eighth grader is going to have to come up with 75 bucks more a year. And in the end, they'll say, oh, yeah, you get a free Chromebook at the end, but no, it's not a free Chromebook. It's a $300 Chromebook that's now four years old. So I, I get where he's coming from. But the bigger picture is the way the policies are getting rammed through without having ample opportunity for discussion and even coming up with, these are the fees. These are why there are these fees. This is where we can get the fees from. Or maybe it's not even applicable for us to earmark this as a. User fee.
User, yeah. Mandatory, mandatory.
Right, so. So if you have those three months of going over the policies, then you can, you have time to do it the right way.
Well, I want to respond to both of you guys. I completely agree that the timing is not ideal. Administration, I don't want to make this sound bad, but administration had a deadline to hit as it relates to incoming freshmen, and we were kind of put in a box, that's for. I can assure you that there was a lot of dialogue via email with administration that went into this decision. And I completely agree that the public discourse is not nearly sufficient. So moving forward, I, I completely agree, we need to put a better policy in place to give the public more visibility to what we know. And administration, I mean, you guys agree that we're put in a, put in a box pretty quickly on that one?
For the board to make a decision? Yes. I can say there was a lot of study from our, um, technology committee over the course of a year, several months, looking at other districts. Other districts do charge a fee. It's a rent to, it's a rent to own. It's a rent to, to own, um, system. System. So we're, we're clearly in compliance with DPI and their user fees.
The other, so the other pieces, I'll be more than happy to share with you a lot of the emails that were exchanged. He had a lot of questions about. The similar questions that you had in your email that I'm going back and reading as it relates to the engineering and the software programs that can go on the computers. So I will forward you all the correspondence that we had as a board and the questions that Donna answered for us prior to making the decision, just so you have a little more visibility to look at the questions that we asked. And I'll make myself available to you personally if you'd like to continue this discussion. We need to bring it back to you.
Please.
So just so you're aware of what you stated, Brian, about Kettle Marine is not. They charge a hundred dollars per year for three years for the Chromebooks and it is a rent to own as our superintendentship.
Being a prior superintendent to Whitefish Bay, I can tell you that they have a technology fee as well.
I, I want to thank Brandon for those comments and I would second that. I think there was a very short timeframe around this and I. To the extent that it, it restricted. Public participation and the decision making here, I want to offer the apology for that. It certainly was not the intention whatsoever to. Put restrictions on, on our parents. Again, I think it was presented as, as a, an overall package. And again, I think what, what Brandon suggested is, is absolutely accurate. There was a lot of email conversation around it, so. It's, it's not that the board just was presented something and no questions. There was a lot of things behind the scenes and Donna was. Right on with, with responses. And so I think board members came feeling comfortable with the responses we were offered to for many questions we had. I, I would join Brandon if you feel the need to, to have a further conversation on this. I, I will join you in that conversation as well.
Okay, so that concludes our. Public comment section. We'll move into committee reports and first up is Chairperson Hammer with curriculum.
Thank you. We just had a meeting on January twenty sixth. We covered a lot of ground. We had a few guests in. One was the instrumental music teacher Jake and I'm trying to murder his name. Okay, he presented a field trip proposal to the International Music Festival at JFK Center for the Performing Arts in Washington, D C. Scheduled for April twelfth through the sixteenth of two thousand twenty four. We got the pricing. The committee agreed to move this proposed trip to the board meeting tonight to discuss and take an action on. Can we do that after we go through everything or? Then we had a presentation that was very interesting and the board had been very interested in seeing how teachers went ahead and selected textbooks. And the purpose of this was just to learn the process. It wasn't like we wanted to insert ourselves in book selection or anything like that. We wanted to know and learned ourselves how. The process worked. So we had four teachers from the language arts department. This is White House, Ryan Elmer Green, Katie Herman and Dave Urok, and they came in and they explained the whole process to us. It was really I O P and I thought the board members that were present really thought a lot about it. And we learned a lot and it was very good on both sides. So Sue, do you want to add anything on that?
No, I think the, the discussion revolved around honors English ten, which is a new course that we'll be offering. To our sophomores for next year. And so we just wanted to establish. That the work regarding the novels and the informational texts and essays that had been selected for reading. That, that Carol and the, and the team could continue to explore the wide range of, of novels that, that they needed to explore. To have that ready in the curriculum for next year. So I thought it was good, timely and good exchange of information. Teachers did a great job.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Then we moved on to chat G V T and do you want to elaborate a little bit on that?
Well, there's been a lot of chatter around chat G P T at the university level, of course, and. And, and in middle schools and high schools in particular, concerns about what that will mean for instruction and assessment are, are rightful. Questions to be asked. I think right now we're all learning about what the tools that, you know, are out there in pilot form, the way I understand it and. Lots of people, you know, testing out its capabilities. I suggested in part of the discussion, teachers will need to look at the assessment practices that they have. Outside of class in particular, but also take a look at the prompts and the opportunities that they ask for students to participate in terms of. Of writing and otherwise, we already have policy language related of plagiarism or work being turned in. That's not your own. It's a great opportunity to talk to our young people about academic integrity and if we need to pursue further discussion in our. Either student handbook or, or in other expectations that we have for students, we could, we could certainly do that. Right now. The Open A I website isn't accessible at school, but certainly students can access it from home. So there's, there's lots of discussion, especially among those that have heavy writing emphasis in their curriculum, English teachers. We don't believe it's the end of English classes we know it, but of course we're going to need to explore ways that we have to adjust. To, to adapt to new technology and that's, you know, kind of what we've been doing for a while. So I think it's, I think it's a good discussion. No action necessarily being taken at this time, but I'm. Sharing a lot of the articles and things that I'm reading with faculty members. There's a lot of good dialogue around ways to adjust practices.
And then we talked about the A C T test that will coming up in the spring and the pre A C T act, which replaces the fire tests.
Sure, yeah. And lots of information coming to families in the course of the next few weeks. I started with communication regarding all our spring assessment dates and what that means to the calendar and the bell schedule and. And some adjustments that we have to make there. The first test, March seventh is A C T currently a paper and pencil assessment. But the pre A C T, much like the Aspire, is a test that has to be conducted on school owned computers. So it does adjust our instructional days when we have, we have a window by which we need to test all ninth and tenth grade students. So I sent that information to families so they could see. What is coming up in terms of spring assessment and of course, like I said, the first one is March seventh. So lots of information coming forward to our juniors regarding the state mandated A C T test on March seventh. And then more information coming to families regarding the pre A C T secure assessment, which will take place April seventeenth through the twentieth. We also have forward assessment that's conducted in our social studies classes as well this spring. So state testing on is on the way.
Okay, now we had two more items. One was the discussion and action or will be on the trip to Spain. Actually, it was going to be Peru, but it was canceled due to civil unrest. So that has been changed. And you know, I meant to ask, what group is that? Because I, I didn't have that in my.
Which school group?
Yes.
So this trip has been opened up to world language students who study Spanish above, I believe, levels.
Okay, I knew it was something, but I didn't have it written down. It wasn't in the notes here. So thank you for that. The last thing that we finished up with was, we had some board members that were questioning access to Canvas. Because some of our board members are parents and with their children, they do have access to Canvas, but other, other board members do not. So we started discussing that for a little bit, but then we decided to send that to policy. So that is where it is now. Probably take that up in policy coming up shortly. Okay, so then we have our two action items here, discussion and action. Would you like to take that over, Kim?
Sure, we have discussion and action on the Windon ensemble trip to implement the Washington, D C International Music Festival. The John F Kennedy Center for Performing Arts, April of twenty twenty four. Any further discussion around that? All in favor, or I?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the discussion and action on the alternative international trip location and summary itinerary from Peru to Spain. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll move the approval as presented. I'll second again.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That too carries. Thank you.
And our next meeting is February twenty third at six forty five A M and on the calendar for that is future D P I accountability report card. And if anyone has any other ideas or anything they'd like to see, I'll just email Sue or I or let me know or Sue. We'll take it from there. Okay?
Thank you, Chairperson Hammer. Next up is Chairman Thompson with Finance and Legislation.
We have a meeting set for next, see, not for next week, February twenty second. At six forty five, the agenda will include three main items. First will be the discussion and review of the financial audit report with the auditor present at our meeting. Secondly, we will have a presentation of the five year plan, enrollment projection, financial projection. And thirdly, discussion related to board budget. Those are the coming up agenda items a week and a half or so from now. Two weeks ago, February twenty second.
Thank you, Chairperson Thompson. Next up is Chairperson Beniker with Buildings and Grounds.
Thank you. The Buildings and Grounds Committee met last Thursday and we had some great topics. The first one was Adam's curse proposal of. Having a little field trip of looking at other schools in the district with board members where it would be pretty much an all day event where. Adam would coordinate of us looking at different schools, just seeing, you know, the setup when we, you know, when we're thinking about budget, potential referendum. Just kind of looking at those. Learning environments and seeing, you know, what do we want to have Arrowhead to be. So looking forward to that. We are probably planning sometime after spring break. For that road trip. So hopefully most of us can attend either part or the whole day. So looking forward to it. Second, Brian Mangan talked about the scoreboard sponsorships. So we are. At the football stadium of replacing the scoreboard there. Where it is getting funded primarily through sponsorships. And if we have that scoreboard long enough, it'll actually, you know, turn into a profit for us. So Brian's been working diligently. With our four call anchor sponsors to secure the funds there for that. So if all goes well, we should anticipate installation around mid August. During the committee meeting, we also had Kevin Lipstone. Talked about the first and also Jeff Gross talked about the first half of the fiscal year, where we're at in terms of buildings and grounds and. With budgets, you know, our buildings are getting older, so we are exceeding budget in some of those pockets of, you know, in terms of maintenance and operations. So we're, you know, closely evaluating that. We also kind of went through the list of things that we need to cover for our goals of. Replacing or fine tuning and he went through the top ten priorities for infrastructure. Well, things that are on the way under development, we are looking at. You know, things of replacing the cloud truck, also replacing the maintenance facility. That, that's in the works there of gathering quotes and coming up with, replacing that, also the swimming pool electrical unit as well. So if you look at the Buildings and Grounds agenda. You can have access to the dashboard report that it was referring to, where we look at that each quarterly and update that. So that's available for. The public there. See, also, we also, Jeff Gross started the conversation of, you know. We have a referendum that we have expires in a couple of years. And we're looking at, you know, revenue sources and, you know, potentially, you know, evaluating referendum. And last time, I believe it was in two thousand and fourteen or fifteen or sixteen. The last, the last referendum study, study was done in fourteen. So in twenty fourteen, fifteen, we had a company that evaluated our Buildings and Grounds area and gave us estimates of what each of the areas would cost. The study, it is eight, nine years old. So we do feel that it is something, you know, for the board to, do we commit the resources there to get that outlook of. What's, what lies ahead of us in terms of. Maintaining buildings and grounds, what takes priority. So we will be discussing that in more detail at the next Buildings and Grounds meeting that is scheduled for Thursday, March the second. Jeff, how much are those facility studies noted? What I did eight years ago was say around twenty, twenty five thousand. If that architect, when we actually end up choosing that architect to move forward with and then we, they included that fee toward, to go toward. Fees of design work. So it's typically how they do it. But I've got R P that I can put out there to several different firms to see what the throwback is. And right now that's the sole item on our agenda. So if there is other things that want this stuff, please let us know. That's my updated reports.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Beniker. Next up is Chairman Plainer with personnel.
January thirteenth, we meant to review the process for preparing for and selecting our next. Committee as a whole developed a consensus on our timeline and we. Give you the work involved in putting the drafting in the base, job descriptions, study of compensation issues related to. Contract or superintendent, the structure and questions to be used for. The interview process and focused efforts on seeking public input and gladly. Our board accepted those tasks in stride and have been working faster than I can keep track of mostly. And so we've been pleased to see that all moving forward at the same time that we're receiving our applications. From interested superintendents is with all the applications that we get, but as you're cautioned. That pool is not as broad as it has been at times in the past. So looking forward to seeing what comes in the door yet. Through to the end of the application period expiring on the attempt. I asked Daryl to review for us the survey results from the school survey that was issued on this tab.
So, thank you, Tim. So what we did in terms of for the superintendent search, we did a research approach where we did a two product. We did surveys so we can kind of cast that broader net for our Arrowhead parents as well as faculty and staff. And then we kind of, that was to kind of determine what's important. Then Adam Kurt actually moderated some great focus groups last, no, Monday night to find out, okay, this is what it is. Wow. So we did this tool methodology and he, he did that with. Faculty, with a faculty, parents and also students. So I will kind of go over the survey results. Then hand it off to Adam of what he found in the, in the roundtable discussions. So. We did survey, we did survey our faculty, you know, not just teachers, everyone employed here at Arrowhead and we did have a hundred and fifty three people in prime. Which was roughly about, I think around sixty percent. If my numbers are correct. And then we also did receive feedback of nine hundred and two people, parents and guardians. And I know there was some discussion in terms. And I know there was some discussion in terms of the, um, community about the survey. Uh, where it was tended to parents, but it did go, Arrowhead parents, but it did go to other groups. Um, we did have about fifty people identified that they only had students at feeder schools, um, not Arrowhead students. I did the due diligence. I did do the comparisons of what's their top three open comments. I saw very, a lot of similarities. In the data, so everyone was accounted for in the, um, in this nine, nine hundred and two. So a lot of great research that was uncovered, you know, we asked questions about, you know, of this top ten, what's important. And we had to open responses, you know, how should we approach the superintendent? Uh, search, you know, other traits, other models like that. Um, so a lot of great research. So from the quant, from the, um, survey, the top three things I had here was of the attributes was. You know, creating and foster a positive culture and environment for administration, teacher, staff and students was the highest rated trait. Or the new superintendent among both, both, both amongst teachers and, um, parents. And then also representing the voice of the staff, student and parents. Um, when updating or developing new policies and procedures with the school board and recruiting and retaining the top. That was number two and three for all bodies. And just wanted to take a step back. When we looked at these, um, traits, the ten traits that we had, Brandon, Miller and I were. Took charge of that, um, initiative. So we shaped that up, but we also bunched the ideas off of Adam Kurt to make sure that we were in a line of thought. With that superintendent sure of what to do. Um, then thirdly, we did see, looking at the open responses that, you know, there are strong concerns from both survey audience, the. Teachers and staff and also parents of how politics will play in the final decision. Um, Adam, if you go to the next slide. So I don't know if you all can see that, step up a little bit closer, but, um. So these are the ten attributes that we evaluated and, you know, we had pick your top three, uh, five-point scale. What is very important? When I looked at fours or fives of what's important, everything's important, but we kind of looked at separation. What rises to the top? And like I said, in the, um, the top three things to know, those were the main things of the top. Grant, there was some, some percentage gap. So, you know, the positive culture was a lot more important to the teachers at eighty-five percent. Uh, for parents and guardians, it was at seventy-four percent still number one. Uh, you know, some of the things that were kind of down below on the bottom was, you know, be a facility or referendum planning expert or be a policy. You know, what you see is, you know, with superintendent, it's like, okay, they may not necessarily have to be an expert, but they need someone on that staff to be the expert. So how to work together there? And that's what we saw from the. The, from the web survey. So I'll just pass it off to Adam to talk about all the great things he heard from the focus presentation.
Yeah, so, um, the focus groups runs for a different purpose and in a diff, little different way. So at the top, you're seeing the slideshow that guided the night. It's a very prescribed process, which bothers some people. Um, it, it requires zero input from myself. Uh, I think, uh, Ms. Kradowski and Ms. Gordon, they were, um, working hard all night, uh, helping with the process. It's, it's kind of a grind for two hours. Um, but there's many benefits. I can't take process, uh, credit for the process. I stole it from a consultant who, and then I worked with a superintendent to really clean up my practices and using it. But the benefits are such that, one, you get words directly from your stakeholders. So. Nothing, like a survey, we're, we're creating the statements and allowing to get feedback on those statements. This, everything that, uh, our board, our community will see in the comments and in the, uh, priority rankings. It's verbatim from our groups. Second is, um, it allows, um. Uh, full voice with full autonomy. So, uh, we, we forced max mixed groups, which means that every group, there was a student, a parent and a staff member. And every group had a single spokesperson, so you never know where the comment is coming from the entire night. So where human nature sometimes takes over that, uh, you know, if we have a group of students and they put up their requests and I don't like kids. So I'm never going to pay attention to that sheet, right? I'm going to pay attention to the adult sheet because I like adults better, right? So that takes out that whether intentional or unintentional bias through this process. Um, so that's a huge benefit as well. Um, and in the end, through an affinity process, you get a priority ranking of, uh, pieces. That are shared with you from these groups. Um, so it's a really, uh, it's a strong process. It's, uh, it, like I said, it was two-hour grind. Um, to Darcy spoke earlier on, on, uh, an email she sent, asking why there wasn't more parent involvement. Uh, it's truly a, um, it's a data piece and it's a faction and it's a capacity piece. So. Um, what I was told is if you do twenty to forty and they're perfectly mixed groups, they have a representative from each group. You will get the same data as you would get from two hundred to four hundred. Okay? As long as they're mixed groups, if you, if you mess with that, you won't get the same data. Um, and it's a capacity piece. I, I was a part of this process for about a hundred and twenty-five community members and it was a full Saturday from seven AM to five PM. Uh, to give the same sort of results. So unfortunately, I was not able to run that sort of process, but I can assure you the groups were. Uh, who were, um, reached out to to be a part of this were groups already invested in our school and, and very active in our school. And I mentioned some of them are PTO, our Arrowhead Scholarship Fund, Athletic Boosters and Performing Arts Boosters all had representation. Uh, at that night. So a balanced group of parents, uh, we had six staff members and eight students. Uh, all students were from the student cabinet, a diverse group of students. Um, and some of you, uh, board members received an email or a couple emails. Speaking to the, just the insightful and eloquent comments that our students make. Uh, always my favorite part of the day is meeting with student cabinet and, and hearing them, uh, give, give us feedback. So. Um, I think that's all in terms of the, the background of it. The first, uh, about thirty minutes is spent talking about what we're proud of and what successes we have and what of Superintendent Myra's leadership. Um, our groups want to either continue or, or, or mirror in our, in our next selection. Um, and so they meet in groups, they talk for, I think it was about twenty minutes on that. They list, uh, without putting it in order. And then we just scoop around the room and in about ten to twenty second intervals, they give a, a suggestion. This is where Devin Becky come in. We have these big white sheets here. This is what my office looks like right now. Big white sheets where they were scribbling furiously, uh, writing down every comment that was said. Like I said, this is word for word. This is, uh, some are, some are shortened and we short-handed them just for the purpose, but this is comments from our groups. And so we spend, uh, a few minutes on that and those actually are the blue ones at the bottom. So all of our successes, prides. Uh, and Superintendent Myra, uh, qualities are on the two sheets at the bottom. And then later on in the night, they're given three stickers and they have to prioritize what is the most important to them. This helps work out personal agendas, uh, of ulterior motives because. It doesn't have any stickers on it. That means people don't agree with you. There's a lot of stickers on it. It means a lot of people have said, yes, this is what's important to all of us. Um, so that's another benefit of the, of the process. The second half of the night, second, I guess, two-thirds of the night was spent talking about skills, qualities. Um, and goals, uh, we would like to see from our next superintendents. Same process. This is a little longer. Ask them to spend about five to ten minutes on skills, five to ten minutes on, uh, qualities. And then about twenty, fifteen minutes, I believe, on goals. So big picture items, what, what they hope to accomplish. Again. Shout them out, wrap around, single spokesperson, you never know what's coming from, put it up on the boards. They're given three red stickers at that point. Then we had about twenty minutes of conversation where I brought, um, the three top responses from Daryl. Uh, from our survey results and our, and they're looking at the top responses on these sheets. And it's an opportunity for them to ask questions, give, uh, clarifying comments, um, rethink, reconsider. Uh, whatever it may be, that's the only open comment part of it in which Devin Becky were both taking notes the whole time. So those notes will be shared with the board. Everything that was said that night is written down. So you can see almost every word. So that's the only open portion. And then at the end there, uh, they reported three more yellow stickers where they can place anywhere they want. So after more conversation, after processing, after reviewing, after looking at it in a different way, they then get six stickers to place total as a priority for, for the night. So, and what you see is what, as, uh, what the end of the night looks like and I can kind of show you. So this is what, uh, our, our group was most proud of and a lot of what you're seeing will be reflective of the comments and the results of the survey, right? Um, so we had a student-centered, uh, leadership group, uh, under Superintendent Myra's, uh, leadership. Uh, we've hired experienced staff, ability to highlight academic and co-curriculars, positive here at Arrowhead. Academics and co-curriculars, something for everyone. You've heard that many times. So you can see the color shading. There is a, there's a math equation as to how, how many you should put in each. And, um, what I shared with them, uh, was our, our pools are smaller than they've ever been, uh, that the, um, position of superintendency. Statewide is, uh, is a tough role right now. And so I shared the goal here is to meet as many of those priorities in the blue as possible. If we can get in the green, uh, get in the lighter blue, the green and the yellow, uh, as we move down, then that's great, but, um. But we're really focusing on, um, theming out the top requests of the, of the focus group and trying to get as many of those in our next leader. I'm in it. Just because this is the first time the board's seen this, this was finished a couple of hours ago. So, um, I'm going to go through this pretty quick, just kind of highlight a few. And then I'll send it to the board. I'll share it and you guys can review it and we'll post it on our, our superintendent's website. Okay? So I'll go a little quicker through the rest. So skills, some, some not surprising, some maybe a little surprising, but communication is the top skill requested of, of the group. Now remember these, so these are up at the same time as qualities and goals. So somebody had to choose to place a sticker on skills, on communication over, uh, you know, uh, a hot tub. Whenever, you know, whatever somebody wanted. I don't know. I can't figure it out, but, um, so whatever was in the goals for, for, um, our groups. These were more important to them. So there was about eighty choices by the, by the end of the night that they had to choose to put their stickers on it. So that really kind of, um, isolates and focuses in. On their answers. Qualities. Um, again, some reflective of our survey results, um, some pretty common for, uh, for what we would expect of a, of a, uh, an educator. Uh, goals, this is where it really lines. Keep quality teachers was the top goal. I believe that was third, uh, in the survey results. So. Um, the fact that those are so closely aligned, um, is, uh, is a large, um, piece of how this process really works. Then in the end, again, that was the top out of, everything that we looked at was keep quality teachers. And then, so these are the ones that came to the surface out of all sheets, uh, responded. Here are some of the comments as, as we shared. We allowed three conversation in the end, uh, almost word for word, our, our two associate principals were, were typing down. Responses and thoughts, because what we said was, these were the top three responses in our survey result, but we don't really know what that means, what people thought when they're choosing this. So tell us what this means to you. So this is just information for our board to consider as a further breakdown of, um, survey results. We did the same thing with represent AHS, staff, student and parent voices. And we did the same thing with recruit, retain, dot teachers. Okay? That is the end of our nights. Any questions on our process or evening?
Uh, Adam, who was in charge of selecting the people who were in the focus?
Uh, it was by invite to those groups. We had forty originally who's, who signed up and then it whittled itself down to about twenty, I think, what I said, twenty-seven there.
I know there's caution within the audience, the, the board have any.
Board had no influence over. No, I was completely in control of this, unfortunately.
Wonderful things to help process. And they, they're the way to spend a little more time digging into the results. But I, I guess as I wrap up, I would say that our, uh, last personnel committee meeting, we concluded with. An agreement that we would, uh, listen to our staff and administration in the selection process. The kind of work that Adam has done, uh, uh, implemented by the, if what Daryl has done has been a great step forward. And honoring that commitment that we made to one another. And so just want to thank Adam for his hard work. We have our next meeting on February fifteenth, that's next Wednesday, six forty-five AM. That is almost entirely. Probably except for the portion where we say move into closed session. That's an all being closed session. Uh, we will, we have got a full agenda and I have to apologize. I know eight o'clock has been. Everybody's goal is a hard stop. This is not going to be done. Um, I am going to frontload it with the superintendent elements of this so that everybody. Ordinarily would be able to be there from six forty-five to eight are there for that part. Uh, we're going to get into a benefits discussion after that, which I just love, but I hear some people don't think. That's the most interesting part of the agenda. We'll save that for the afternoon. That's all I.
Thank you so much.
I just, one item, there you have a link to a non-disclosure agreement that staff. Anybody in staff who has access to our applicant pool has signed, um, I've signed it. But Kim was saying that, um, before we walk into a closed session, today I would be grateful if, um, everybody has signed this down. And now.
And we've involved Kate in the, the process of capturing, uh, signatures wherever necessary from staff and. Parents and students as well. So thank you, Kate. Yeah, I, I second Tim's comments. I, I, um, very much appreciate the hard work from our principal and assistant principals. Uh, as well as Daryl and Brandon on the survey. So, uh. Lots of good data. We'll, uh, we'll sit through and certainly take into considerations from the board. Uh, next up is, uh, Policy with Chairperson Harris.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, we had our last meeting on January thirty-first. Uh, it's a very robust meeting. Uh, we started out, uh, basically discussing the idea that, uh. Um, the next few meetings, uh, my, my goal as a chairperson for policy is to try to, um, get through all policies. Uh, within the year, that's, that's kind of been the goal of the board, um, uh, from the beginning. So we're basically moving back to, uh. Allowing, uh, some, some further discussion on minor changes to policies that'll be, uh, that'll be coming forward from our superintendent. And also, uh, from Kate's suggestions. So we're looking forward to that, the next, uh, meeting or potentially two. Uh, we also had a discussion on, uh, the policy and procedure one fifty-one point four, uh, public participation at board meetings. Uh, again, this is not, um, the meeting was really, this whole meeting was really revolved around, uh, how can we get more concise with these meetings? Um, that we're having because, uh, we're going to probably be here again tonight till twelve thirty to one o'clock in the morning. Uh, and so we're trying to figure out the best way to, to make this possible. Uh, so one fifty-one point four is really to, uh. Allow members of the public, uh, the opportunity again during the board meetings to speak about topics. That are happening at that board meeting, uh, so we can understand your position on that. We will continue to have the open forum. Uh, as, uh, Craig Thompson mentioned, uh, we did talk, uh, briefly about the idea of. Uh, extending, uh, public comments into the meeting. Uh, there were some different points of view on that. That'll continue forward. Uh, not necessarily as a, uh, as, as a new policy, but as a discussion topic. Uh, so we haven't, we haven't ended there. Uh, we are very interested in always hearing, uh, from the public. So we'll, that's, that's a piece. That's a little bit of flux. Uh, then the other, the other piece that, uh, we discussed, uh, was a, uh, an idea presented by our board president. Which is a, a fantastic idea that many boards, uh, do in this to have a consent agenda. Our potential for the consent agenda is, uh. The very things that are kind of, uh, should be quickly approved such as, uh, the meeting minutes, the district bill list, donations. Resignations, retirements, contracts, letters of appointment, uh, routine annual contracts. So these are all different subtopics. That we have to go through as a board and approve or deny, uh, individually. So the idea for the consent agenda is basically to lump all these on a regular meeting into a, uh, an overall idea of consent. From the board, uh, if any individual board member, uh, has a concern or a piece of, of any of these items. That they would like to further discuss, they can pull them out of the consent agenda, uh, address it, say, you know, I'd like to pull this piece out. Uh, we can talk about it and then we'll go back into it and, and discuss it as, as a group. Uh, this is going to probably be a, uh, a work in progress since we have done this before, but many boards do this. Um, so, so again, basically an idea, uh, that, uh, will hopefully save our board time. Uh, so having said that, we have, uh, a couple of discussion and, and action items. So I'll turn that over to our board president.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Uh, so the first, uh, first one that we have again discussed, um, the policy is, uh, action on. Policy and procedure one fifty-one for public participation in board meetings. Uh, before you, you see the, uh. Uh, the policy procedure as written. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy procedure one fifty one point four.
Is there any further discussion?
I did have one question Chris mentioned. We're gonna review the public conversation, the meeting conversation again. That's gonna be, I think, a continued topic of discussion. It probably, I mean, if it had to be a policy, it doesn't sound like, can you elaborate on that, Laura? It didn't seem like that had to be a policy.
It hasn't been a policy, the board certainly has the prerogative to make that into a policy. Right now, it's been part of the agenda where the format and rules are noted.
So we, I think we, I think that should be a continuous discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I have concerns about what happens tonight where it's where community members don't get the chance to talk about something that may not be on the agenda. Either because one or two people went long or there's a lot of debate about certain topics. So I personally don't necessarily feel inclined to change the policy as is. I mean, I was probably the first to admit that I've been knocking on Ken's door telling him to shut those meetings. But I don't want to do that at the the risk of not hearing the public either in the community or in the public comments. I personally don't have any issue if the public wants to bring up issues that are on the agenda. So that's, that's where I stand with it. I think we're making a pretty good stride in the right direction with the consent agenda. And I think that'll be interesting to see how that short, therefore, at this point, I'm not in favor of the public comments.
So so just to clarify, it's really not about shortening of public comments in any way. It's just really about, there's, there's been a lot of meetings that we've had duplicative discussions. Somebody will come up prior to the meeting and discuss something until again, discuss that, public comments. And it just gets kind of repetitive. I I agree with you that I I don't want to cut off anything, anybody wants to say it in open discussion. The the piece that we have prior to the board meetings, I completely agree with that. So the the whole, the context of this is really not to squash any discussion. It's, it's, it's basically to mostly eliminate duplication and then to keep us on task.
I wasn't able to join you on the meeting the other day. I attempted to, but I had technology issues, so please forgive me. I wasn't able to participate in that conversation. I do have a few thoughts right now, and I would agree with parts of what Brandon and Chris have already said. I am very concerned about the possibility or the likelihood of preventing public comment from citizens in our community. One possibility, we're interested, this is all about interested in saving time. One thing that can be done is to limit comments to Arrowhead district citizens. Non residents have spoken on a number of occasions in the recent past. And I don't think that we need to give the time to them at the expense of our residents. That would be one place where we could save some time. I can think of several reasons not to implement this policy, which does limit the amount of feedback we can get from the public. Some of these have been mentioned already, but others have not. Many in our community may be unable to attend on a particular date. So many of us, I think you younger members of our board can identify with the reality that you have kids. Kids are going in different directions at the same time, you're trying to get here, you're trying to get there. You may not be able to attend. If a meeting is only gonna be open or agenda items only to be open for one time, those folks are not gonna be able to talk. And I don't think that that's a good idea. Secondly, twenty four, forty eight hours notice, you know, that's maybe the legal requirement, depending if I hope that that exactly right. But for members of the community who are not privy to or aware of these things, they may much appreciate more notice than that. And if a person only gets twenty four to forty eight notice hours of notice out there, then they have to become informed of it. They have to form an opinion, they have to try to formulate a way to express themselves. And gather the thought to speak, that's hard to do with relatively short notice in some cases. We heard from one of our member, one of our citizens today how compressed the timeframe was on a recent discussion. There were other factors in that particular case. We were under the gun a bit because of the calendar. But there have been other cases where this board has not given adequate procedure and process and especially citizen input. So I think that is very important. If we limit ourselves only to one meeting's agenda items, we're excluding possibility of of people discussing other very pertinent topics. For example, other things that are future agenda items. We have a live issue about cell phones right now. I don't see any reason why persons from the public shouldn't be able to speak about cell phones. We have a live issue about block scheduling right now. I don't see why any reason, there's any reason why people shouldn't be able to speak to block schedule. There may be other kinds of issues like that, there'll be others in the future. To limit people from speaking to those very pertinent issues is not helping. Somewhat related, often a time at the top, it's the full full board meeting like tonight. A decision has been largely made at a policy meeting or at a curriculum meeting or at a B and G meeting or finance meeting. People don't have a chance to, if if they were appised of what happened in the subcommittee meetings, they wouldn't know maybe what was gonna happen in the full board meeting. So to give people an opportunity to speak. It is sometimes a very short time between a committee meeting and a full board meeting. That's, it's just not right to limit that. One last thing, again, as we discussed or we saw today, this evening, based on today's student or citizen comments, we already are moving too quickly in many cases without enough citizen input. People didn't have a chance to speak. So I, I, I don't like the idea of limiting this apart from perhaps a list of future agenda items which are pertinent and are worthy of time. Let's not limit community input. The only, we are public servants.
Greg, in the interest of time, I.
Last sentence, we are public servants, the only is on us to be available to the community. I cannot vote for this as it is now.
Anyone else who would like to?
So I guess I I just like to reiterate that it's, again, it's absolutely not about limiting speech in any way. Anybody can speak about anything, past, present, future at our open forum. I think we do have to continue to have a dialogue on, you know, as you know, since you've been on the board for a long time, Craig. And when we decided this with the last school board last year of adding an open forum with regards to our opportunity to be more transparent with the public. It really was, you know, for the the chance to have that open dialogue that because we, because of the way board meeting is structured is not there. I I do believe that, you know, there were, there have been meetings that we've, we've had where, you know, it's not, not many people want to talk. And so, and that's fine. You know, so to push the commitment back to six o'clock to say, let's say this board would get from six to seven as as a, you know, public comments or an open forum section of our meeting, you know, is is again creating an additional requirement for us to be here longer. I agree that we, we should discuss the idea of having a a rolling meeting starts to be able to address all policies. And, you know, give everybody a decent amount of time to speak. But that, that, that does exist. Right now, it's limited to a half hour. That, that probably should be extended. But again, the duplication during the meeting, it doesn't make any sense.
That, Chris, that addresses the issue of, well, it really doesn't address the issue of time. You're just expanding time then. It doesn't address the issue of trying to limit the amount of length of meetings. If we roll it into a later period or we start it earlier, we're just gonna add more time. It also doesn't address the possibility of people being able to speak to issues that are pertinent to our board and to the public and limiting them to one particular time.
Well, I mean, I I completely disagree. We do, we will give them the opportunity to speak to whatever they wish. The the discussion or the thoughts of of making the start of rolling start would be, again, to to, you know, to be more considerate to members of the board, noting that, you know, there might be a a night where people want to speak for an hour. There might be a night where where people want to speak for, you know, ten minutes. So I think it's, I think it's actually more considerate because during the meeting, we're, you're limited to three minutes. And and you have to get all your information out. We're, we're being, I think, even more considerate by allowing them to have more time to potentially have a rolling start, which is a discussion point that we have to make or that we have to discuss. But it doesn't limit anything.
The only thing I would say with the rolling, with, I'm against the rolling start, especially when you have your fifteen band members here performing where it's like, you know, a high school kid and sometimes the parents that are bringing that kid. There's that window of a half hour. Because otherwise they're going to another sport where they have to study for an exam. So I'm not in favor of doing the rolling start that it's like, let's start at seven so we can give that commitment to the students. Like, hey, can you be here from seven to seven thirty? Because I personally, that's like my favorite part is the superintendent's report, especially tonight, moved up a couple notches. So that, my two cents, and then I was going back and forth on this, tonight with it, you know, stopped where it just, the comments, we didn't have enough time in that thirty minutes to hear from people. And that would be, you know, stink for a person that came and they didn't show up, they showed up and it's like, shoot, I want to talk about the cell phone policy. That's like, oh, shoot, I have to come back here next week, next one, hoping that I get in there in line. So my two cents, you know, I was debating that kind of solidified just watching it tonight. That I feel against the policy here of its stated. Maybe it's table for later on, you know, but right now, maybe we'll give some a shorter meeting with the other thing that we're.
Yeah, just a sense. A comment from my point of view, I think I've challenged this a bit. The thing the policy meeting discussions is I I love transparency, the opportunity for transparency and really across anything. But what I, and I also don't want to be bucketed as someone that makes the decision, policy meeting or committee meeting. I I wait until my time to vote, that's when my decision is made. So I take all of it and put in, so it doesn't just stop. However, I think this policy is trying to solve a problem by one percent of the community that is taking ninety percent of the time. And I think that's the wrong approach. I think it would be ideal if our community can help govern this a bit and maybe in a way hold themselves and each other accountable to respect each other in these public forums. So that's, that's kind of where I'm resting my decision at this point. Put it back a little bit on the community to be more respectful of their own time. I get it, I'm a servant of the public, so I'm not putting myself in that bucket, bucket. I'd rather be respectful for each other and not so much of just my time in the seat. So with that point, I will.
So I have similar concerns. But I also recognize the challenge that face. And I think that the proposed policy is a good way of effort to try to change things enough to, you know, make things more efficient. I did spend a little time looking at a motion that could be made on an evening when we've got a particularly robust participation on the part of the public. We could, somebody could move to suspend the rule. And that seconded by a majority of the board that night, then we could permit, you know, a more expansive discussion than the rule would otherwise call for. And it's the fact that we could do that, that makes me think that maybe we should give this a test run. And if people hate it, we can withdraw the policy, you know, next month or the month after that. But if we are able to sort of adeptly make a motion to suspend the rule, let people talk if it's needed, then hopefully we put the general discussion of all topics on the front end and try and grow people into a respectable period of time so everybody gets a chance to talk. And we focus on the agenda in the middle, at the middle of the meeting, if possible, if not possible, or reasonable people.
Can I ask a comment on that or have a comment on that? Could be that rather than implementing the policy and suspending the policy, could we not simply suspend the three minute rule in some cases during the during public comments session? Passives. You know, in other words, we don't have to allow for strictly three minutes, it could be four minutes. Well, that would solve this whole problem, I think.
Well, if we were kind of looking though to shorten the meetings, if you're expanding the three minute rule, then that kind of doesn't do that.
Well, we're pushing it.
Yeah, my thoughts on this are, I don't want to see a rolling community forum process that would go into this school student showcase. But I think that's one of the most important things that we can see, what's enjoyable. It is, it is kind of fifty fifty on this one. I understand why this is being brought up and why we're thinking about it. I was thinking, you know, the way we sign in for school board meetings, whoever wants to talk, what if we at the start, whoever is here and is willing to speak, sign up for the community portion and at least give us an idea of how many there are. And we could plan, plan it from there. And then if we have extra time at the end and someone decides, oh, I'd like to talk to, you know, we might have extra minutes before that seven time board meeting.
I I also like what Tim is proposing. It's in keeping, I think, with the spirit of what has typically happened here anyways. Typically, when there has been an overwhelming number of public participants, the board has, I think, very generously allowed everyone, I mean, the pool discussions, for instance, comes to mind, where we just plum ran out of time in the thirty minute community conversation. It rolled over into public comment and it went much, much longer. And and so there is, you know, as everyone is suggesting, there is a lot of desire for all board members to to hear from from the public. We're not intending, we're not trying to shut that part down. It is again, an effort to make the meeting a little bit shorter and to avoid some people's being caught out. So I wonder if if we might not perhaps take this once again back to policy and if we would have the the board's approval to take a second look, for instance, at, you know, what, what work ever longer is proposing.
Thank you, Kim, I have moved that we do that.
So I'll draw my motion.
So and I'll redraw, or I'll withdraw my, my motion.
My motion to table also.
Thank you, I I very much appreciate all the thoughtful discourse, thank you. So the the second, the second item is discussion, action and policy one fifty one five.
We, we had a motion to table this in a second, did you vote?
We didn't vote.
All of you vote, I'm sorry, sorry, I was. No, no, thank you very much, I appreciate it. So we have the the motion to table, we have a second. So we have the, the motion to table. We have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
I would just point out that you can slip that past nine board members, but you can't get it through.
Thanks, Kate. Then we will move on to discussion and action on policy one fifty-one five. Regular board meeting agenda format.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy change for the consent agenda.
Okay, sir. Is there any further discussion around this?
Just, just to clarify, we can pick out any one of those items and bring them to a discussion. We know those aren't excluded in this. We can pick out any one of those grouped, for lack of a better term, grouped items and select them out and bring them to the board to discuss if you wish.
At the time, at the, at the very specific time.
Yes.
Absolutely. And then we selected out further discussion and then action on that.
Okay, thank you.
If I would probably just add that, I think the reason why the, this grouping was put in there is generally is very benign in terms of what, what is there in the content. But it's just for everyone's benefit, it is putting the onus on the nine board members to do a lot of that questioning and back and forth discussion so that these can be on the list. It's not just a way that's only needing to ask the questions or dig into the failures and expectations to do that prior to this. It's not to sidestep and.
And in fact, I think, you know, is originally framed in, in terms of, uh, we're non-controversial.
That's, that's better than benign. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. And we have a second. Any further discussion? Vote to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Alright, so our next meeting date is February twenty eighth, twenty five.
Thank you, Chairman Ferris, and we'll move into other reports. Wasby is listed. I have nothing to report on Wasby. Cesar?
Nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. New business, employee transactions. Do I have a motion to approve the resignations and retirements?
Sorry.
Any discussion?
I think it should be clearly noted at this point that we are officially acknowledging Laura Myras' retirement. And I think it is proper to show her due respect and gratitude for the job well done over the last eight years.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the resignation and retirements. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve a resignation of terminals, carries. Next up, contracts and letters of appointment. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Any discussion around this? All in favor to approve the contracts and letters of appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carries as well. Discussion and action to accept donations. Make a motion to approve.
I'll per second. I'd like some insight into board creation.
Well, I can hold one of them. This is brilliant. It's a beautiful application. And what's inside is, is even better. It's all so written by students and we even have some board members' children who have participated in this as well. And it's really a fabulous application. So we, we thank the merit group for their support. And then the second one, I think, pertains to the presenters that we had heard earlier. Diligently on our other task force.
So, um, do we have a motion to approve those? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of accepting the donations as opposed to, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Okay, discussion and action on the twenty-three, twenty-four special education consulting services. Sixty-six point zero three cooperative agreement. I'm going to pass this on to Adam Moltz and perhaps Jeff for comment.
So this is our cooperative agreement for vision and orientation services and hearing services with the Elmberg School District. So essentially what you have is school districts typically don't have enough students to justify having a full-time person on their staff to work for vision and orientation and hearing. So one school district hires a person and then multiple people and then essentially contract with other schools for the amount of time needed. So our cost is always varying depending on the students that we have here and what's in their I E P. Over the last three years, it goes up and goes down. We're a little bit higher this year, but that's or hired last year because we had more deaf and hard of hearing students that increased again this year. So I have a total for that. And then next year, we haven't added those I E Ps yet, but we will in late March to see what our costs are, but this tends to be the most cost-effective way to do it. If we did it this way, it would be contracting with another service. So, but this is the way that we go and race that'd be competitive, not.
And the services are flexible in the name of persons.
That's right. Yeah, we only, we only get charged for exactly what we use pretty frequently. Going times a lot. Tied to the minutes in the I E P, they come out and provide those services and that's what we pay for.
Have we ever struggled on getting that here with Ethan?
No. They, they know their times, they know they're coming out, a lot of them work with our feeder schools, which is great because then the services just continue. So we get a freshman in here that has hearing devices and they the staff member comes with the hearing devices before they start school, gets them all set up in the rooms and the student knows the, the teacher and the professional. It works for us. It's been very smooth for us. But they cost, Kim had asked if we pulled the numbers and costs vary year to year, three thousand to four thousand. Last year was seven thousand. We'll probably be up around that range to find those students that we have this year for.
I'd move that we approve the control.
I second.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four special education consulting services sixty-six point zero three cooperative agreement. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any future agenda items for coming meetings?
It's not an agenda item, but just a question or it relates back to our donation list. I know there's been a community member reached out several times around donation of weight room, gym room, equipment. I just want to make sure that, that that gets followed up.
Yeah, we met, yeah, we met last Friday. They are donating a a pretty awesome piece of equipment that, that we'll be using in our weight room. Mr. Mang is working with him to find our weight room's capacity. So we're finding something we can remove that that's our most updated piece that'll offer the same. So Mr. Mang is working with him and we should have something to bring him forward at some point.
Yeah, didn't want to lose an opportunity.
Yeah, I know, we met with him last Friday, last Friday morning, Ryan and I did.
Awesome, thank you. My other one is a new business, it was going to be some recognition, but two of the folks on it, we sure heard it or are gone, so anyway. But as a parent attending the orientation for eighth graders, coming home to your future freshman. Nice job. My son was prepared, I was prepared, board member, proud to, to be there, but I was there as a parent, not as a board member, but that's all to everyone that did that.
I can second that. Compared to my daughter when she was COVID and he's at it virtually. My son had a whole different perspective and he signed up for many more activities than what my daughter does. So he's like outraged.
Did he sit in the eighth grade boy area separated from all the other parents or they all just drift?
No. You're at the basketball game that we had just wrapped up, so they were all smelling together by us.
Any other future agenda items? If not, pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight five one the board will move into closed session, which means.
We need motion to move into closed session.
Oh, yes.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll post.
Yes, there you go. Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
I'm sure. Nice catch during the meeting too.
I, I just, you know, there is. So it's just shooters and the stage.